Hi students, hello, good evening. So in this we are going to look at the work session on vectors. In the morning we have covered the theory part of it comprehensively. So in the session we are going to look at the sample numerical type of questions that we can expect from a neat examination point of view, okay. So I am just waiting for a couple of minutes, after that we can just start the session. So like you know, in the mother like we will have these kind of sessions after we finish every chapter. So each chapter we will have some, at least one session on working out of those problems. After that you will get an idea. Okay, but you need to keep practicing. In the work session also you can go and practice some questions in the materials and all that. After that you can come back and take the tests. When everything is done, we have to compulsorily take the test. After that we will get an idea, what is our preparation level? Is it able to meet the expectation of the neat examination island, then only we will come to know. Okay, so in this we will start with the session. So we will start with the questions one by one. I think we are having around fifteen problems in this class, okay. So we have around fifteen problems. So the thing is like this, I will just read out the question and then I will give you some time to work out the problem. So answer on the order you can just type the answer in the chat window so that I can also see. And if you are getting any wrong answer means I will also explain you the detailed solution. I will take you through the steps, okay. So we will start with the session students. So I think we can start, so maybe I will just check who all is there currently. Okay, so we will just start the session now. So first question, look at the first question, what is given in the first question? Within brackets, X comma Y comma Z. Coordinates of points A and B are given respectively. So generally like you know, if you are representing the coordinates of a point, right? Every other representation, so we will put this in the bracket, X comma Y comma Z. Okay. So here, point A or coordinates is zero comma three comma minus one. Point B, B coordinates, what are the coordinates of point B? It is minus two comma six comma four, okay. I will then look at what they are asking. The displacement vector from A to B may be given by. So don't think that it is a question related to the motion chapter. This is a question based upon the simple concept of vector, okay. So look at this, I will just give you the idea, then you can start and solve the problem. So we will have the origin somewhere, in the origin which you will have, okay. So this is point A and this is point B. What they are asking, they are asking in the displacement, displacement. Generally we will represent displacement by what? We will use the symbol yes, okay. So displacement from where to where, A length B. That is what they are asking, they are asking displacement vector from A to B, okay. What is the information given to us? They are giving us the coordinates of the point A and point B. Point A or coordinates and point B or coordinates, okay. What are the coordinates of point A? Zero comma three comma minus one. B or coordinates, minus two comma six comma four. A coordinates are what? Zero comma three comma minus one, okay. So if you look at, remember we discussed about the concept of what? Position vector, what is position vector? The vector that you draw from origin length to the particular point, okay. So origin length if you draw a vector to the point A, that is what is position vector of point A. Is that the R A which you will have, okay. So R A, what is the position vector of point A? What are the coordinates of the point A? Zero comma three comma minus one, so the position vector will be zero into I cap plus three into J cap plus minus one into K cap and the respective coordinates. So that is what is the position vector of point A. After that, if you draw a line from origin length to the point B, that is what is our position vector of point B. Look at this, what is the position vector of point B? It will be what? Minus two into I, six into J, after that four into K. That is the position vector of point B, okay. So we are getting position vector of A and position vector of point B. Now, we are supposed to find, we have to find out what is this displacement from A to B. Look at this now, this is a question based upon what? Based upon the simple resultant concept of vectors. This is based upon the resultant concept of vectors. If you look at this, right? R A bar, okay, and in the displacement vector, these are like what? These are like the sides of the triangle, this is R A bar, okay. This is the displacement from A to B. And the two vectors are resultant, the closing side of the triangle taken in the reverse order or opposite order, I will write the R B bar. Okay, so in the triangle base, what is the result? R A bar plus and the displacement from A to B. Other two resultant is what? R B bar, okay. So in this, we are looking for what displacement? We are looking for the displacement, so in the expression, what is displacement in the R A bar? Right side, okay. So look at this guys, what is the formula? This is the formula that we will use in the motion chapter. Displacement from A to B, A length B, displacement vector will be given by what? What is the formula? The R A bar right side, it will become minus R A bar. So it will be what? R B bar minus R A bar, so displacement from A length B. When you are going from A to B, displacement vector is given by what? R B bar minus R A bar means what? Position vector of the final point minus position vector of the initial point. So in the formula, remember, so we can look at this formula. We will again go through the formula in the motion chapter also. But it is based upon what? Based upon the simple concept of the resultant, okay. So the displacement from A to B is what? Displacement from A to B is given by what? The final point position vector, R B bar minus initial point or the position vector, okay. So if this straight question, I will write the result. I will just erase some part of it. So look at this student, I think some of you are able to get the answer already, check it. What is the position vector of B bar minus position vector of A? That is what is our displacement from A to B, okay. So what you are supposed to find displacement from A to B is equal to what? Either R B bar, R B bar means what? Minus two I plus six J plus four K, this is R B bar. Minus of R A bar, R A bar's value is zero into I means zero, it will be what? Three J minus K, okay. So totally, what is the result? Look at this students, what we are going to be getting? So it is what? The minus two I, okay. So this is six J minus three J. So three J, this is four K. This, what is it? Look at this one, no, minus of minus K becomes what? Plus K. So totally four K plus K is what? Five K, remember we did that. Adding and subtraction when they are in the component form. Vectors are given in the component form means, how do you add them? Simply add the components, how do you subtract them? Simply subtract the components. So this, R B bar vector, I cap is not available. Observe this, R B bar vector does not have any I cap component, okay. So you have to confirm students whether you are getting the answer or not. What is the answer you are going to get? For the first question, right? We must get the answer as what? Option C, we should get the answer as what? Option C, okay. So after the question, we will go to the next question. Look at this question number two. The maximum and minimum magnitudes of resultant of the two vectors. Maximum and minimum magnitude. See, for example, if you have the vectors as A bar and D bar. So the maximum, so if the vector A or magnitude is A, D magnitude is B. Maximum, maximum means what? Maximum, when that A bar and B bar are actually parallel, when they both are parallel. Maximum, maximum result of that value is A plus B. What is the maximum result of that value? It will be what? A plus B, correct. So A plus B is seventeen. After that, minimum, minimum, when they both are in the opposite direction, that is the minimum. The minimum resultant value is A minus B, remember? If two vectors are parallel, the resultant will be what? A plus B. If they are in opposite directions or anti-parallel, then actually we should keep it as what? Modulus of A minus B. We don't know whether A is higher value or B is adding higher value. But for now, since we are only dealing with numbers, right? A minus B, okay, so what is it? A plus B's value is what? Seventeen and A minus B, maximum magnitude and minimum magnitude of the resultant is given as what? Seventeen and seven, okay. If these two vectors are at right angles to each other. If the two vectors are right angles, they are making an angle of what? Ninety with each other, then what is the magnitude of their resultant? What they are asking? What is the magnitude of the resultant? If say for example, they both are perpendicular or they are making right angle with each other. Then what is the resultant value root of A square plus B square? Remember this formula also we discussed. What is the normal resultant formula? Root of A square plus B square plus two A B cos theta, that is the normal resultant formula. If the angle is ninety, means what? Cos term will become zero. So resultant will become what? Root of A square plus B square. So to solve, we will require the A or value and B value. What are the given equations for us? Maximum resultant value, what is it? Seventeen, minimum resultant value is seven, okay. So in this, look at this, like we solve in ten standard, right? Equations in two variables, we can first add both the equations. Look at this, add in the B minus B cancel. So two A is equal to seventeen plus seven equals twenty-four. Other than A will be coming as what? Twelve. Two A twenty-four means A will be coming as what? Twelve, okay. So A twelve, then you know, you can take it and substitute in any of the equations. Look at this equation, one will substitute. Twelve plus B is equal to seventeen, which means what? B will be five, correct, okay. So finally, what are they are supposed to find in the question? We have to find out what is the magnitude of the resultant when they are at right angles. Right angles, then what is the resultant formula? Root of A square plus B square. So it is what? Root of A or value is twelve, so twelve square plus B, okay. Then the twelve square is one forty-four, one twenty-five, five square is twenty-five. One forty-four plus twenty-five is one sixteen nine, okay. So root one sixteen nine, root of one sixteen nine is what students? Thirteen square, thirteen square is one sixteen nine, okay. So root nine, one sixteen nine is going to be what? Thirteen, that is the answer. Okay, so what is the answer for this question? I am yet to see the responses, students know. You have to type the response and only I will know whether you are able to come along with me or not, okay. So this is what is the answer for the second question. Look at the next question, question number three. If A bar plus B bar plus C bar is equal to what? Zero, what is the information they are giving us students? They are saying A plus B plus C or value is equal to what? Zero, vector sum, okay. Then A cross B or value, what they are asking? They are asking what is the value of A cross B? So bring options, we have to tell this in terms of other expression. You are not giving the exact value of A cross B is equal to this much or that much, you are trying to give the value in terms of what? In terms of the other expressions, okay. So in the mother, how are we going to approach? Okay, so in the technique, I will just explain to you. If you have an expression, A plus B plus C is equal to zero, either we will put the expression, okay. Then what are we supposed to find? First of all, in the expression, A cross B is not available. Is A cross B there in this expression? Then how we can find out A cross B? How we can find out A cross B? So we can find out A cross B. If we bring in that expression, how we can bring in the expression? Look at this, so in the expression, think of it, it is the possibilities. Okay, I will explain both the possibilities. First, in the expression, we can do a cross product with A. In the expression, we can just do a cross product with A. Look at this, so if you do a cross product with both, LHS also we have to do, RHS also we have to do, okay. This is what? A cross A plus distributula. Remember, what is the distributula? After that, A cross C. RHS, A cross zero will be zero, okay. So A cross B plus A cross C is equal to zero, okay. So in this, look at this. A cross B, in the A cross C, it will be what? Minus of A cross C. A cross B's value, it is coming as minus of A cross C. Check the options, check the options. A cross C is there, but minus of A cross C is not. Remember one more thing, students? Minus of A cross A, this is nothing but C cross A. Minus of A cross C means what? This is nothing but C cross A. Check if C cross A is there in the options, C cross A is also not there in the options, okay. So in the expression, we are able to just do the cross product with A bar. After that, we are able to get the expression of A cross B. We are able to get the expression of A cross B, okay. So after that, we are not able to conclude the answer. We cannot just straight away go and tick the none of these option, we cannot do that, okay. I will show you one more way of getting this in the A cross B value, okay. One more way of getting the value of A cross B, okay. So first, we did the cross product with what? A bar, first we did the cross product with what? A bar, we are going to do the cross product with B bar. Now we can try the cross product with what? B bar, B bar is the cross product. Look at this, LHS is what? B cross A plus B cross B plus B cross C, okay. This is equal to what? RHS, B cross zero, B cross zero means zero. So B cross B is zero, okay. So B cross A plus B cross C is equal to what? Zero, right side, what is it? B cross A is equal to minus of B cross C. B cross A is minus of B cross C. But we will not, we are not looking for B cross A. So B cross A can be written as what? Minus of A cross B, correct. Remember, B cross A can be written as what? Minus of A cross B. So minus of A cross B is equal to minus of B cross C. And minus minus cancel. So what is the answer, students? A cross B's value is what? It is equal to, the expression is equal to what? B cross C. So how are we going to get the expressions? So the expression, A plus B plus C is equal to zero and the cross product term is not. Okay, so we should think about what is the method in which we can get this A cross B term? Other than the options, we will do the cross product with A bar. A bar which cross product. Or we can do the cross product with B bar. Then first we check with A bar, after that we are not able to check, okay. Then you know, we tried with what? B bar, we tried the cross product. Now we are able to get the option they are giving. See, in MCQ type of examination, especially in need to mother example, it is not about what is the answer we get. And the four options, what is the relevant answer that they are expecting? We should get it, okay. So in the situation, we were not able to get the answer that we have got. And the options, we should not just go and take none of this. We should try and see what is the answer they are expecting. We should see, okay. So is it clear, students? We will go to the next question. Let us go to question number four, question number three. The theoretical question. The vector sum of two forces is perpendicular to their vector difference. In that case, the forces, other options, first option cannot be predicted, means what? And the forces, second option are perpendicular to each other. Options are equal to each other in terms of magnitude. Only magnitude equal, okay. Options are not equal to each other in magnitude. Magnitude equal, that is what is option D, okay. So first of all, let us assume, we will put the forces, let us say the two forces are what? F one bar and F two bar, what they are saying? The vector sum of the two forces is perpendicular to their vector difference. What is it? The vector sum of the two forces means F one bar plus F two bar is perpendicular to their difference means F one bar minus F two bar is perpendicular. Remember students, when the two forces are perpendicular, then the dot product will be equal to what? Zero, other than the condition. Whenever two forces are perpendicular, then it means what? Their dot product value will be zero, okay. So we can use the distributula, so distributula used. F one dot F one, so first we will do the multiplication with F one, okay. After that, minus F one dot F two, then we will take the second. Plus F two dot F one, minus F two dot F two. Okay, so F one dot F one means what? Remember this concept, guys, you know, dot product. A dot A will be equal to what? A square, so F one dot F one will be what? F one square, okay. If you, F one dot F two will be equal to F two dot F one because dot product satisfies what? Commutative law, okay. So A dot B, A dot B is what? A into B into cos theta, okay. B dot A, B dot A will be like the same way if you write means. B into A into cos, so A dot B will be equal to B dot A, okay. So minus F one dot F two plus F two dot F one, but this is negative. They will cancel each other, they will be canceling each other, okay. So cancel, remaining is what? Minus F two dot F two, this is F two square, okay. And the value is zero, means F one square is equal to F two square. This is not concluded. These are magnitudes, they will be always non-negative, they will be always what? Non-negative, generally, we are adding X square is equal to Y square means we cannot say straight away X is equal to Y. We will say what? X is equal to plus R minus Y, but in this, F one F two are what? The magnitudes, they will not be negative, they will not be adding a negative value. So we can say F one, F one square is equal to F two square means, that means what? F one will be equal to F two, means what is it students? It means what? The magnitudes of the two vectors will be equal, okay. The two forces are equal to each other in magnitude. And the two forces or magnitudes will be equal, okay. Is it clear? So after the question, we will go to the question number five. Look at this guys, question number five, okay. What is this question number five? A bar and B bar are two vectors given by A bar is two I plus three J. B bar is what? I plus J, okay. The magnitude of component of A bar along B. What they are asking? The magnitude of component of A along B bar means what is it students? Say this is A bar, this is B bar. The magnitude of component of A along B bar. Suppose, let us say the angle is theta. What is component of A bar along B bar? It is A cos theta. We have to find out the value of A cos theta. We have to find out the value of A cos theta. We have to find out, okay. Look at this, whenever two vectors are there, they are asking finding of the component of one vector in the other direction. We can solve this by using the dot product method. We can solve it by using what? Dot product method, if you have A dot B, what is A dot B or actual value? It is A into B into cos. What is A dot B or value? A into B into cos. So we can bring the B to the LHS. So it is what? A dot B by B that is equal to what? A cos theta, means what we have to do? And the two vectors, first dot product. And the dot product value, we have to divide by what? B vector's magnitude, we have to divide the dot product value by the magnitude of the B vector. By the magnitude of the B vector, okay. So in this, what is A bar? A bar is equal to what? Two I plus three J, after that, I plus J, okay. A bar is equal to I plus three J, B bar is equal to I plus J, okay. So find out the dot product, dot product means what? Remember, in the vectors, K component is not. We are just having what? X component and Y component, Z component is not. Okay, generally, we can say I component, J component, K component. Or we can also say X component, Y component, Z component, okay. So remember the dot product of two vectors formula, A X into B X plus A Y into B Y plus A Z into B Z. That is what is the dot product value, okay. So in this, A X or value is two, B X value one, A Y or value is three, B Y or value one. A Z is not, B Z is not, so which means what? Two into one plus three into one, which is equal to nothing but five. That is going to come as what? Five, so A dot B or value is five, okay. B vector's magnitude, remember students, what is the B vector? I plus J means the B magnitude is what? Root of B X square plus B Y square. Remember, if you have the components of the vector, we can find out what is the vector's magnitude. So which is what? Root of one square plus one square, which is root two. What is the B vector's magnitude? Root two, so denominator root two. So what is A cos theta value students? It is five by root two, which is our option A. So what is the value of this? It should be what? Option A, check it. Check it students, it should be coming as what? Option A, okay. So after the question, we will go to the next question. Look at this, question number six. Two forces, three Newtons and two Newtons are at an angle of theta such that the resultant is R. So they are giving two forces, three Newtons is one force and two Newtons is the other force, okay. They are at an angle of theta, theta value is not. Okay, and the resultant is what? After that, second condition. The first force is now increased to six N. Means first force or actual value is three N, three Newtons. Other than, they are increasing it up to six Newtons. And the resultant now becomes what? Two R, the resultant is now becoming what? Students, two R, resultant is becoming two R. So what are we supposed to find? We are supposed to find the value of theta. We have to find what is the value of theta. So first of all, I will just use the same notation. So let us say the two forces are what? So let us say the two force are what, A and B, A value is now three. Second force value, two Newtons, angle theta, initial resident of R. Use the formula guys, what is the formula, R is equal to root of three square plus two square plus two into three into two into two A B. Cos theta, that is the formula, okay, so which is what, three square is nine, four square, four, okay, sorry. Three square is nine, two square is four, nine plus four is thirteen, okay. So this is now, R is equal to root thirteen plus two into. Another, three into two, which means what is it, twelve. Twelve cos theta, okay, wow, so R is equal to what, root of thirteen plus twelve cos theta, fine. So the equation one. After step, we are changing the, we are changing the. First force, we are changing it as what, three Newton, we are making it as what, six Newton, so in A dash, this is what, six Newtons. Are six, very on the value. B dash, second force, we change it, it is just say same as two. First we are changing, first instead of three, we are making it as what, six, okay, wow. The first force is now increased to six Newtons, means three Newton is increased to six Newton. Second force, we change it, it is as it is, third angle same, theta is the angle. Now, the resultant is two R, means look at the formula, resultant formula is now the root of. First vector square, which is six square plus two square plus two into six into two into. Three cos. Okay, six square is what, thirty six, two square is four, okay, so paranga. Two R is equal to root of thirty six plus four is what, forty plus, is another, twenty four cos. So this is what, twenty four cos theta, this is our equation two. Okay, students, paranga, it is a straight formula based question. Same, the resultant formula. We have to use the resultant formula two times, okay. So if we have to, just go for the mathematical simplification, we have to go for the elimination concept. So the two equations, we have to eliminate the value of R. R eliminate, we have one equation, which is having our angle theta. Okay, so other step, what is the next step going to be? So first equation, R value, what is R value, root of thirteen plus twelve. After we substitute. So two into root of thirteen plus twelve cos theta is equal to root of forty plus twenty four cos theta. The two. Two square will become four, root, square, the root cancel. So thirteen plus twelve cos is equal to forty plus twenty four cos. So paranga, so for thirty is what, for thirty is how much it is, it is fifty two plus. Forty eight cos is equal to forty plus twenty four cos. Okay. So number. Forty, we will bring it to the. Uh, left hand side and the forty eight cos, we will take it to the right hand side, okay, wow. So L H S is what, fifty two minus forty, R H S la, twenty four cos minus forty eight cos is what, minus twenty four cos. This is twelve, twelve is equal to minus twenty four cos, means cos is equal to minus half. Remember students, we should remember these values, okay, cos sixty is what, half. Cos one twenty will be minus half, what is cos minus of one, what is that value of that angle? The angle must be what, one twenty, paranga, what must be the angle, the angle must be coming as what? One twenty, cos zero is one, cos thirty is what, root three by two, cos forty five, one by root two, cos sixty, one by two, cos ninety, zero. Alga paro, cos one twenty is what, minus half, okay, cos. One thirty five will be minus one by root two, okay, cos one fifty will be. Minus root three by two, cos one eighty will be minus one. Okay, so we should remember the common values, resultant formula, we are going to get the cos. Because we will get the resultant formula, resultant of two vectors, A bar and B bar is what, root of A square plus B square plus two A B. So we should remember the common values of this cos. Okay, so we will go to the next question, other question, look at the seventh question, question number seven. Paranga, the unit vector, it was a different question, in fact, the models are also, I mean, you know. Sometimes we have gotten the positive examination, okay, the unit vector parallel to the resultant of the vectors. So we have to find unit vector. We should find the unit vector. Which is parallel to the resultant of our A bar and B bar. We should find the unit vector parallel to the resultant of A bar and B bar, okay. So first, think about it, we should get the unit vector, other number ultimate objective, huh, but. We should first start with this, because they are asking what, we will find the unit vector parallel to the resultant, means what? And the resultant to the direction, what is the unit vector value, that is they are asking, they are asking what, the unit vector. Which is in the direction of our R bar, R bar is what, resultant of A bar and B bar, means A plus B, paranga, A plus B. So adding of the two vectors, which is, this is I component four, this is I component minus one, means four minus one is three, okay. This J component is three, this J component is three, so three plus three is six. This K component is six, this K component is what, minus eight, means six minus eight is what, minus two, this is R bar. This is R bar, we should find what, unit vector in that same direction, and the direction, we have to find the unit vector, remember guys. If you have any vector, A bar. And the direction, you want to find, you want to find a unit vector means. What is the method to find unit vector in that direction, we can find. We can find the unit vector in the direction of A bar, how. A cap, that is representation, A cap is what, unit vector in the direction of A bar, A cap will be A bar by mod A. A cap will be equal to what, A bar by mod A. Any vector, A bar can be written as what? Modless of that particular vector multiplied by unit vector in that, in that direction. Okay, so A vector can be written as what, the modulus of that vector means, and the vector magnitude multiplied by unit vector in that direction. So in another, the R cap, that is we find out. Unit vector in the direction of R bar, R cap value is now, it will be equal to R bar by mod R. What is the value of R cap, R cap. R cap will be equal to what, R bar by mod R, mod R means what, and the R bar vector magnitude, okay. So paranga, what will be the modulus of this R bar vector, so root of three square, it is adding X component, root of. X component square plus Y component square plus Z component square, that is magnitude, okay, three square plus six square plus minus two the square. Root of, three square is what, nine, six square is what, thirty six, minus two square means four. So nine plus what, thirteen, thirteen plus thirty six is what, forty nine, root forty nine means what, seven. So R bar magnitude is what, seven, so R cap, it is nothing but, R bar by mod R means. Three I plus six J minus two K by seven. Check the answer guys, what is the answer, option A is the answer, check it. What is the answer we should get, we should get the answer as option A, paranga. See, we should work out questions like this, you know, these are good models. Finding unit vector along a direction, if you want to find the unit vector means. Just, and the vector value divided by its modulus or its magnitude. Okay, next question, question number eight, this is another interesting question, paranga. This is another interesting question, let's see, the question solve, it means you are able to understand this unit vector concept thoroughly. Two vectors are given, A bar, B bar. I plus two J plus two K, alga paro B bar, three I plus six J plus two K, A bar and B bar are given. Another vector C bar has same magnitude as B. C bar has same magnitude as B. But has same direction as A bar. Means, C bar is in which direction, C bar. C bar is in the same direction as A bar. But what about its magnitude, its magnitude is what, same as the magnitude of B bar, so this is. First of all. B bar magnitude, C bar vector is having the same magnitude as B bar, right, first B bar magnitude we find out. So what is B bar vector, B bar vector is three I plus six J plus two K. So that a magnitude, modulus, what is it, root of, three square plus six square plus two square, is what? Three square is nine, plus six square is thirty six, nine plus thirty six plus four, nine plus four, thirteen. Thirteen plus thirty six, root forty nine, what is root forty nine, students, is what, seven. So B bar magnitude is what, seven, means, C bar, C bar, what is the magnitude of C bar, it is seven. First step is over, okay, wow, so we are able to get what is the magnitude of our required vector. So the required vector C bar is adding a magnitude of how much, seven, okay, wow. Next, what is the next point, they are saying, C bar is in the same direction as A bar. After that, look at this, so A bar in the direction. We will first find what is unit vector in that A bar direction. How do you find out unit vector in the direction of A bar, it will be A cap, right, it will be A bar by modulus of A. Problem we discussed about it, correct, in that A bar direction, unit vector will be given by what? A bar vector value divided by its modulus, means what, I plus two J plus two K, that is A bar value. What is mod A, look at this students, what is mod A, root of, this component is A X value one. A value is two, A Z value is two, so root of one square plus two square plus two square, is what? Root one plus four plus four, root nine, three. So, I plus two J plus two K by three, that is A cap, what is A cap? Unit vector in that direction, in the direction, A bar is there, in that same direction, what is the unit vector value, it is what? I plus two J plus two K by three. Now, what is our purpose, we have to find the vector C bar, we have to find what is vector C bar. So remember, C bar, C bar magnitude is what, seven units, correct, because that is same as the B bar vector magnitude. And C bar is in the same direction as A bar, now you tell me. Do we know unit vector in the direction where the C bar is present, do you know? We know it or not, this is what is unit vector in the direction of C bar, this is, C bar is in the same direction as our A bar. Now remember guys, the concept, any vector, any vector can be represented as what, any vector can be represented as. And the vector magnitude multiplied by unit vector in that direction. Any vector can be represented as what, and the vector magnitude multiplied by unit vector in the direction, wherever the vector is present, okay, wow. So the unit vector value, this is our unit vector, which is in the direction of A bar. That is also the direction of C bar, right, because A bar and C bar are both in the same direction, okay. So C bar will be equal to what, seven, which is the magnitude of the C bar, multiplied by. I plus two J plus two K by three, this is unit vector, which is in the direction of our C bar vector, okay, so paranga, another option. What is the option that suits us guys, option A, which is, so they are just written as what? The three. They are written as what, seven by three into I plus two J plus two K, okay. Check it students, what must be the answer, what must be the answer, it is what, option A, what is the answer students? What is the answer, it is option A. Okay, other question, we will go to the next question. Question number nine, if A bar and B bar are two vectors, then the value of. This is a normal simplification problem, what we are doing? A plus B cross A minus B, okay, wow, we will start with the distributive law. So first, we will just do the cross product, it is what, A cross A minus. A cross B, okay, after second term, it will be what? B cross A minus B cross B, this is, A cross. Cross product of any vector, which will be what, zero, B cross B also is what, zero, okay, wow. So now look at this, now look at this carefully, students, what are we going to get? So this is minus of A cross B, this is B cross A, remember, what is minus of A cross B? Minus of A cross B, nothing but, B cross A, okay, so in the minus of A cross B, we can write B cross A, B cross A plus B cross A, so what is it? Two times of B cross A, paranga, what is the answer, option D is the answer, just straight. The distributive law. Such modifications based upon the properties of the cross product, the properties of the cross product, we should always remember. Both the properties of the cross product, and the properties of dot product. Cross product and dot product, they satisfy distributive law, they satisfy associative law. Dot product satisfies commutative law, but cross product will not satisfy the commutative law, commutative law means what? A dot B is equal to B dot A, that is the commutative law, but A cross B is not equal to B cross A. A cross B will be minus of B cross A, either, minus of A cross B will be B cross A, okay. So look at this students, what is the answer for this, option D, other question, we will go to the next question, question number ten. The resultant of three non-coplanar, non-zero vectors, A bar and D bar and C bar, so we are having. Three vectors which are A, B and C, which are non-zero. Which are non-zero and non-coplanar. Non-coplanar means what, they are not on the same plane, the plane, A bar, B bar, C bar are not there, okay. After then, the resultant, the resultant, we should talk about, we should talk about the resultant of the three means what? We should comment on A plus B plus C value. We should comment on what is the resultant of the three vectors, okay. So if, remember students, if we have the vectors which are non-coplanar. This is a very important property of the resultant, okay, so look at this, think about a plane where A bar and B bar are present. Because you need two vectors, two vectors, think about, A bar and B bar like this, we can think of a plane where A bar and B bar are present, okay, wow. C will be in some other orientation, on the plane, C is not in the same plane, that is why we are seeing it as what? And the vectors are non-coplanar, C will be in some other orientation, or some other rotation. First think about A bar and B bar, A bar and B bar, we think about a plane where they are present, okay, wow. In the ring, the resultant. And tell me, resultant of both the A bar and B bar, resultant of A bar and B bar, that resultant, let me call it as what, R one. The resultant will be in the same plane, because we will construct the parallelogram, remember the parallelogram. Remember the parallelogram law? So, A bar plus B bar, that's the value, right? Will be a vector which is coplanar with A and B. Means what? The A and B, we wrote the plane, do you know? On the plane, the A bar plus B bar's value is. That is what you are calling as R one bar. Now, look at this, guys, A plus B plus C. A plus B is R one, you are saying. Okay, now, R one, we are adding it to C bar. R one and C bar are not in the same plane. R one and C bar, they are not in the same plane. Then, remember, they will never be able to cancel each other. They will never be able to cancel each other. Then, they will be able to cancel each other, remember? If two vectors are exactly opposite directions with equal magnitudes. When two vectors will cancel each other, cancel means what? Other resultant is zero. When resultant is zero, when two vectors have equal magnitude, exactly opposite direction. Then, the resultant will be what? Zero. Now, R one and C bar, right? They are not in the opposite directions, they are in two different planes. Then, they will never be adding up to zero. R one bar is what? The resultant of our A bar and B bar. And the R one bar, we add C bar. That will never going to become zero. Means, what is it, guys? This is a very important property. If three vectors are non-co平面arr, non-zero. Okay, then, the resultant of the three vectors can never be zero. And the moon vectors' resultant can never become zero. This is an important property of the coplanarity. Okay, so, if we have three vectors which are non-co平面arr, means, A plus B plus C's value can never become equal to zero. Okay, so, this is a property, guys, it is a theoretical question also. Next, we will go to another theoretical question, other question. Question number eleven. Which of the following operations makes no sense in case of scalars and vectors? Scalars and vectors, which of the operation? Operation, they will talk about addition, multiplication, okay? So, which of them does not make any sense? Means, it is not meaningful. Okay, look at this, option, what is option A, they are saying? Multiplying any vector by a scalar. Okay, we can multiply a vector, A bar with the number two. So, this is meaningful. Then, adding a unit vector to any vector. Means what? Let's say, there is a vector like this, two Y plus three J plus K. I can just add a unit vector, right? I can add it. Then, I plus two Y plus three J plus K. Add it, it will be what? Three I plus three J plus K. This is meaningful operation, so, this is meaningful. Then, multiplying any two scalars. Multiplying any two scalars means what? Two is a scalar, three is a scalar. Now, multiply, two and three. This is also meaningful. Look at option D, adding a scalar to a vector of the same dimensions. Remember, in units and dimension chapter, generally, we say in units and dimension chapter, right? When we are adding two terms or subtracting, we can only do when the two quantities have same dimensions. Now, we can add it or subtract it. That is the dimensional analysis, and it is a concept. What is that concept called as? Dimensional analysis, okay, wow? But, there is a limitation, do you know? We cannot, just because the two terms are having same dimensions, we cannot add them. When, when one of them is a scalar and other is a vector. That is a typical example, work and torque. Work is a physical quantity, torque is also, torque is called as what? Turning effect of force. This part, we will discuss and learn in rotational motion. Torque is called as what? Turning effect of force. It is given by the cross product of the position vector. Where the force is applied, let's say, this is the axis. Axis, we will choose a point, the position vector of the point. R bar cross F bar. R bar is the position vector where the point, force is applied, and F bar is the applied force. And the cross product will be called as what? Turning effect of the force, in other words, torque. So, torque is a vector quantity, and the torque is a vector quantity, okay, wow? Now, work is a scalar. Work is what? Scalar, work and energy both are what? Scalar, but they both will have the same dimensions. They both will have the same dimension. So, basically, do you know? A scalar and a vector quantity, we can add it. Like, for example, if you have a number two, we cannot add it to I plus J plus two K. Like, a vector, I plus J plus two K. Okay, wow? Then, we can add the number two. We can multiply, we can multiply the number two with the vector, but add it. Okay, wow? So, this does not have any meaning. Check it, students, which of them does not have any meaning? Which of them is not having any meaning, which is our option D. What is option D concept? It is nothing but adding a scalar, in other words, a number to a vector. That is not meaningful, okay? Next, look at question number twelve, other question. If two vectors, A and B are parallel, then what are the values of M comma N? Where is the M comma N? Now, A bar, A bar's value is two Y plus MJ, plus NK. That is A bar vector. Then, B bar is what? B bar is six I plus two J plus six K. What they are saying? They are saying, these two vectors are what? Parallel. Then, on the condition used only, we should find what are the values of M and N. We should find what are the values of M and N. See, remember, if two vectors are perpendicular, and the vectors' dot product will be what? Zero. When, when the two vectors are perpendicular, the two vectors are perpendicular, then the dot product of them will be equal to what? Zero. If two vectors are parallel, then their cross product will be what? Zero. So, here, I am going to quickly derive one condition. Condition for the vectors to be parallel. On the condition used only, we can solve these kind of questions, okay, wow? So, normally, this is what we call as the determinant, what do we call it as? The determinant formula for the cross product. So, two vectors are there, A bar and D bar, in the component form. So, determinant, first row, I J K. Second row, AX, A Y, A Z. The components of our, and the cross product, the first vector. Then, third row, the BX value, BY value, BZ value, okay? So, if you expand it, this is the expression we have, okay? You can go and check our theory video, how we gave the expansion of the determinant, okay, wow? So, then, what is the concept? This is the cross product's value. I cap into A Y B Z minus A Z B Y plus Z cap into A Z B X minus A X B Z. Then, K cap into A X B Y minus A Y B X. So, if the two vectors are parallel, means what? Or anti-parallel also. This is also possible for anti-parallel. Parallel or anti-parallel means, and the vectors' cross product is what? Zero. If the vectors are parallel or anti-parallel, right? Then, and the vectors' cross product will be equal to what, guys? It will be zero. Zero means what? In the I component, the value will be zero. J component, value will be zero. K component, value will be what? Zero. Means what? Look at this, A Y B Z minus A Z B Y is equal to zero. Now, A Y B Z is equal to A Z B Y, okay, wow? So, like, you know, just bring the B Z in the back, B Y in the back. So, look at this, what happens? A Y by B Y is equal to what? On the right side, A Z by B Z. A Y means what? And the A bar's Y component, divided by B Y, B bar's Y component, is equal to what? A Z by B Z, okay, wow? Now, look at this one. A Z B X minus A X B Z is equal to what? Zero. It is like, A Z B X is equal to what? Minus A X B Z, okay? Look at this, B X in the back, B Z in the back. So, what we are getting? A Z by B Z is equal to A X by B X. Now, A Z is what? The Z component of A, divided by B Z is what? Z component of D, is equal to A X by B X. X component of A by X component of D. Even if we do the last step, do you know? We are going to get like this, A X by B X will be equal to A Y by B Y. That is the last, K component, zero equate. Okay, so, finally, if two vectors are parallel or anti-parallel, means, A X by B X's value will be equal to A Y by B Y, which will be equal to A Z by B Z. If two vectors are parallel or anti-parallel, then, the vectors' cross product will be what? Zero. The vectors' cross product will be what? Zero. That is the condition. Remember these conditions, students? This is used only, many problems, we will solve only, we will use just one. What is it? A X by B X will be equal to A Y by B Y's value, which is equal to A Z by B Z, okay, wow? So, now, look at the next part. So, I will just erase this, and then, the derivation, we will just use this space. So, simple, the problem is simple, the result, we will tell you. Then, this is easy, that is the practice. Okay, so, look at this, result, A X by B X. A's X component by D's X component, means what? Two by six is equal to A Y by B Y is equal to A Z by B Z. This is the first, do you know? In the two numbers, two by six is equal to, means what? In the two, two by six is equal to M, means, M is equal to what? Two by three, okay, wow? So, now, look at this, I equate two by six, two, M by six. I equate two by six to what? M by six, okay? First term and last term. So, two by six is equal to what? M by six, six is cancelled. It is like, M is equal to two. So, M's value is two by three, M's value will be equal to two, that is the concept. This is what is the approach? If two vectors in the component form, they are saying, parallel or anti-parallel, then, what is the relation between the components, students? A X by B X is equal to A Y by B Y is equal to A Z by B Z, okay, wow? Next question. Look at this, if two vectors, A bar and B bar, are the adjacent sides of the parallelogram, then what is the area of the parallelogram? So, this is what is the geometrical application, see? See, if you have the vectors, A bar, B bar, as the adjacent sides of the parallelogram, right? Then, modulus of A cross B, and the cross product's modulus, what is it? The modulus of A cross B will be equal to the area of the parallelogram. Modulus of A cross B will be what? Area of the parallelogram. And if you think about the triangle that they are making, and the parallelogram, we can just break into two triangles. If you break into triangles, right? The two equal up, it will be broken down, two equal area triangles. So, the area of the triangle, the area of the triangle, right? Area of the triangle will be equal to half times of modulus of A cross B. So, if two vectors, they are forming a parallelogram as adjacent sides, then what will be the area of the parallelogram? It will be modulus of A cross B. If the two vectors are forming the sides of the triangle, so, you can see, the parallelogram, exactly half triangle. So, half times modulus of A cross B will be what? Area of the triangle. So, in the particular problem, the triangle, they are asking about what? Parallelogram area. So, what is the parallelogram area, students? What is it? It is modulus of A cross B, and the A cross B's modulus value, that is the area of the parallelogram, which is given by these two vectors, okay, wow? So, now, we should just look at the A cross B's concept, right? So, what is the A cross B determinant formula? So, first row, I J K. Second row, I J K. Second row, components, this is a component, is one, one and two, okay? So, one, one, two, then, B's component is two, two and one, okay? So, two, two and one, so, determinant, we will expand it. I cap into A Y B Z minus A Z B Y, means what? A Y, A Y's value is one. B Z, which is one. A Z, A Z is what? Two. B Y, B Y is two, which is, one into one is one, two into two is four. So, one minus four, minus three, okay? Now, J, A Z, A Z value is two. B X, two, minus, A X, A X's value is one. B Z's value is one, so, one into one. So, two, two are four, minus one, three, so, plus three J, okay, wow? Plus, K, K's cap, A X B Y, A X's value is one, B Y's value is two. So, one into two, minus, A Y B X, A Y's value is one, B X's value is two. So, one into two, okay? So, what is it? It is nothing but zero. One into two is two, and one into two is two. So, K's component is zero. What is it? Minus three I plus three J, this is A cross B's value. We can know, modulus of A cross B. What are we looking for here, guys? We are looking for the modulus of A cross B. So, in the vector's magnitude, means what is it? Root of X component square plus Y component square plus Z component's square is equal to root three A. Okay, so, both of them are having magnitude A. So, A one bar's magnitude is A. A two bar's magnitude is same A. The resultant, right? What is their resultant? Their resultant, they are saying, is equal to root three A. What is the resultant, they are saying, it is what? Root three A, resultant value is root three A, okay, wow? So, now, look at this, resultant formula, root three A is equal to root of, resultant form, root of, first vector's magnitude square plus, second vector's magnitude square plus two into product of the magnitudes of vectors into cos theta, that is. So, root of A square plus A square plus two A square cos theta, so, in the back, root three A. The two sides, we will square it. What we are going to get? Three A square is equal to, A square plus A square, two A square plus two A square cos theta, okay, wow? So, in the two A square, left side, it will become minus two A square. So, three A square minus two A square, it will be A square. So, A square is equal to two A square cos theta, and then, the A square, A square cancelled. So, one by two is equal to cos theta. So, cos's value is one by two, which means, the angle between the two vectors will be equal to what? It will be equal to sixty, how much is it? The angle between the vectors will be equal to sixty, okay, wow? So, now, we need the resultant of A bar and minus A two bar. Means, what they are asking, they are asking, what is the, the magnitude of A one bar minus A two bar? So, A one bar minus A two bar's magnitude, that is the formula, root of, first vector's magnitude square plus, second vector's magnitude square minus. So, normally, if you are having modulus of A one plus A two, means what is it? Root of first vector magnitude square plus second vector. So, generally, like we say in terms of A and B, right? So, A plus B's value, root of A square plus B square plus two A B cos. What is modulus of A minus B? This is root of A square plus B square minus two A B cos. So, it will be what? Minus two into, and the two vectors' magnitude is same, the two into A into A into cos theta. So, cos's value is half, that is, we did it, we did it, cos's value is half. So, means, two, two is cancelled. So, what is it? Root of A square plus A square, minus A square. So, root of A square, which is nothing but our A. Now, what will be the answer? So, first, we will consider the condition, the two vectors, A one bar and A two bar, they have equal magnitude A, okay? And they are saying they are inclined with each other at some angle. They are giving the resultant's value, resultant is root three A. So, this is how we were able to get what is the cos theta value? What is the cos theta coming as? Cos for us is coming as half. Cos's value, it is coming as what? Half. After that, we are supposed to find what is the resultant of A one bar and minus A two bar? Means what is it? We have to find modulus of A one bar minus A two bar. What is modulus of A one bar minus A two bar? Formula, remember, like this, if the two vectors are A bar and B bar, mod of A plus B is root of A square plus B square plus two A B cos. What is mod of A minus B? It is root of A square plus B square minus two A B cos theta, okay? So, finally, the answer, it is coming as what? K. Next question. Paranga, if the dot product value of two vectors is equal to the magnitude of the cross product. So, dot product value of two vectors, means what? The two vectors' dot product, if, say for example, we will take the vectors as what? A and B, other dot product means A B into cos. This value is equal to the magnitude of their cross product, then what is the angle between the vectors? And the two vectors' angle, okay? So, what is the magnitude of their cross product? A cross's magnitude is A into B into sin. What they are saying, in the expression, one's value, expression two's value are same, which means what? A B cos is equal to A B sin. A B is cancelled out, this is how we do it. In the cos, right side, one is equal to sin by cos, means what? One is equal to tan theta. Tan theta, when tan theta will be equal to one, when tan theta will be equal to one, students? When the theta is equal to forty-five degrees, this is how tan theta will be equal to what? One. Clear? So, if the dot product value of two vectors is equal to the magnitude of the cross product, this is how it is. When the angle between the two vectors is equal to forty-five, okay, wow? So, this is what is our question number fifteen, okay? So, this, we completed some fifteen questions today. Maybe you can try and solve the other questions in the assignment and even try and take up the tests on the vector chapter, okay? So, we will see in the next session.